All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. We've got a few items on today's agenda. And then at seven o'clock, we will have our regular meeting. We obviously did not meet yesterday on account of Martin Luther King Day. So we hope you all had a nice day to remember the great teachings of Martin Luther King. We start with items to appear six and seven. And for that, we welcome our finance director, Jason Shat, our public works director, Brian Schmidt, our city engineer, Brent Morlock. And it looks like Jason and Brent are sitting front and center to give us our presentation on our CIP and bond sale review. Gentlemen, you have the floor. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you said, item six and seven on the regular council agenda this evening are a public hearing on the issuance of some bonds and then a resolution to institute proceedings to move forward with that with that bond sale. We will be issuing about $16.3 million in GO bonds. The public hearing that you'll hold tonight is only on the CIP portion, which is about 10.445 million. The urban renewal portion that you see in the middle of the table here, 5.855 million. We did the public hearing for that last year, you'll recall. Those bonds are for the pedestrian gateway bridge over Middle Road. The public hearing last year authorized up to 11 and a half million for that. We issued 2.4 million last year. We're going to issue about 5.85 this year. But back to the CIP portion, because that's what the public hearing tonight will be held on. Part of the bonds is estimated to be 10.445. With a reoffering premium of about 400,000, we should net 10.7 million for the project fund. The CIP portion is all GO, essential corporate purposes. So these are for things like street improvements, sidewalk program, the alley program, street resurfacing and construction, projects like that. And we'll talk about some of the projects in detail a little later. Key events during the process of the bond sale, you'll see January 21st, 2025 is highlighted. That is where we hold this public hearing. Next week, we will conduct a rating conference with Standard and Poor's to receive a rating on our debt. That is currently a double A plus from S and P. And then on the morning of February 18th, we will sell the bonds and council will consider award of those bonds at the at the council meeting later that day. Proceeds will be received by the end of March and off and running for the construction season of 2025, beginning not long thereafter, hopefully. We talked a little bit about the rating already. I do want to talk about the Baker Tilly's estimations for where these bonds will probably land from a true interest cost. You'll see that highlighted down at the bottom third of the page. Baker Tilly estimates about 3.857%. It's been our experience that that we usually beat those expectations. Things are tightening as interest rates rise and the market tightens a little bit. But that's where we would expect to land with this bond sale on February 18th. Here you can see a trend, and this was provided by Baker Tilly, the city's financial advisor, a trend of municipal bond rates over the last 20 years. And while rates have certainly come off the lows that you see back there in 2021 and 22 during kind of the height of the pandemic, they have normalized and are still historically low for municipal bond rates. If we went back even further than January of 2005, I think you'd find rates even higher than what you see here. So while rates are up, that 3.85% is still very affordable money for us going forward. This one might be a little hard to see. You do have this packet at your place as if it's easier to view on paper. This is just a five-year look at the city's debt service fund. I want to share this to show that we can afford this debt without touching the the debt service levy, which is at 485 today. And we will recommend that it stay there for the FY 2526 budget year. You can see the fund balance in the debt service fund down at the bottom of this page. We like to keep this around five, or I should say, the policy states that we can have about $500,000 in the fund, but it can fluctuate up and down as needed to handle, you know, spikes from year to year in debt service payments. Let's go to the next page. Now, this one will be very difficult to read on your screen. This is about, I think, six, six years of historical data and then nine years going forward. So a 15-year picture of the city's outstanding debt. Now, obviously, those forward-looking years are just estimations, and they don't yet include debt for projects that are currently in that unfunded column of the CIP. They also don't yet include some debt that we know we will be issuing for projects at the wastewater treatment plant, but we don't have those numbers dialed in or the timing of those just yet. We should know more about that at the end of this month. But as you can see, going forward, the the trend line is that overall outstanding debt would be decreasing over the next several years. That's represented by the blue line. The orange line is if we carve out some of the SRF debt that we're issuing for sewer projects. We just issued nine and a half million this past fall. There's another 12, 12 and a half million out in a couple of years for some possible projects along the city's eastern side. If you carve out those those sewer projects, you'll see debt decreasing a little bit more sharply on the orange line. And then the green line represents the percent of debt or the debt is debt outstanding as a percent of the state's debt limitation. So that's going from where it was back in FY 19, 61%. We were using 61% of that limit. Today, we're at about 54. Just next year, it'll be down to under 50, 47.76, I think. And then if if all things stay the same and this this we're able to hold to this schedule, you can see it's down at nearly 28, 29% by FY 33. I would add the caveat that this is an estimation at best. As we mentioned, there's a lot of unfunded projects in the CIP that could be brought forward. There's unknown projects that we don't know about today. And obviously, the calculation of the debt limit is based on valuation. So we're also estimating valuation growth over the coming years. But I think the trend lines kind of tell you the story of of what could be. I've also added a page late in the afternoon today. I won't talk about it too much here, but it's just a little bit of a comparison of us versus several other cities. I think it says 24 here, but I didn't get all 24 on the chart. So we'll say several other Iowa cities, their debt outstanding, their debt levy, debt per capita, and then how that compares to median household income in those cities. So that's maybe something just to digest as we walk into budget and plan maybe a little bit larger conversation around debt in general. Come back to that. So the debt that we will be issuing, specifically that CIP portion, the 10.455 million, is really built around funding about 39 projects. And you'll see these on the next couple of pages. And it's specifically the second half of projects in fiscal year 25, the year we're currently in, the first half of projects in fiscal year 26, those starting July 1 of this year and and through the end of the calendar year, but really construction season 2025. So we've kind of got to break up our our construction season across fiscal years, and that can make this confusing. But these are the 39 projects that this money will be financing. I'll just really quickly kind of touch on some highlights, and then we can, we can talk further about specifics if you like. We've added those railroad quiet zone construction in there online. It's number 10 here. The regular programs, bridge repair, sidewalk, trails and alleys and street resurfacing. Some of those programs are funded with this offering. We have the Middle Road rec trail and some trails around that gateway bridge. We have the street resurfacing program, including Happy Joe Drive, Aaron Street and 27th Street. And then you get into the, correct me if I'm wrong, it'll be the arterial program down there at the bottom of the page. So you're talking about preliminary engineering for Middle Road. We have Maple Crest reconstruction in there, widening of 53rd Avenue, Devil's Glen to Middle. Some of the costs for Central Avenue, preliminary costs there, some work up around Remington Road, and then Devil's Glen widening 53rd to Lakeview. On the second page, you'll see the remainder of the projects are mostly traffic related. So that's traffic signals, various projects within the traffic network. So critical projects, small, small in dollars individually, but large when put together. But it's really those 39 projects that make up the bulk of the debt issuance. The reason I separated those, and the full CIP is in your packet, I don't want you to leave here thinking that moving forward with this debt is is a full approval of the CIP. We'll still talk about CIP during budget. There are many, many, many other projects that are funded with sources other than GO bonds that will be up for your consideration during the budget process. But these are the projects related to this debt issuance for the public hearing tonight. So these are the projects we would move forward with once, once those bonds are issued and cash is in hand.
Are there any specific questions on any of those 39 projects?
Questions on the projects, gentlemen, lady?
Lady.
Lisa, you have anything, or Greg?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay.
You know, just to the side, I'm going to want it money so safe for forest growth.
Yep.
Okay.
We do have some design money set aside in the parks section of the CIP. That'll be funded with sales tax dollars. So again, we'll, we'll go into those into those projects in detail throughout budget.
Right. Okay.
Other questions on the projects or the presentation thus far? Okay, gentlemen, back to you. That's, that's it? You feel good?
That's all I had.
Yeah, if there's not, I didn't think we necessarily wanted to step through all the projects again tonight. One thing I did want to mention, just since it is one of the 39 projects, the Maple Crest project that you see on there, that is actually the preliminary engineering for that. That's an STBG project, so it's not funded for a couple of years. So that's just our consultant engineering, and then the actual construction will take place in 2027. I'll get that one updated.
Okay. Anything else on that?
Jason, Your Honor, could I ask Jason a question?
I guess so.
I should know this, but I'm just drawing a blank. Are the SRF funds paid with GO or paid with the sewer revenue?
Those are considered sewer revenue debt. Yep. So as revenue debt, they're not part of that that margin calculation that we talk a lot about.
That's, that's what I was asking.
They're not part of the debt limitation that's imposed by the state. So those are revenue debt. Yep.
But understanding that and how it correlates to the total amount of debt, the total amount of revenue can be part of that discussion as we move into what do we want to do moving forward as part of the budget process? Okay. Anything else? Yes, Greg, Jager.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Decker for talking to me for a little over an hour today about all of this. That was above and beyond.
What are you doing? Why are you talking to people?
Your Honor.
It was on my to-do list.
There you go. My concern, my concern is not necessarily the percentages or the projects, but the amount of the debt that the city is continuing to carry. As I look at the information presented this evening, excuse me, fiscal year 19, our total debt was 134 million. Fiscal year 25, 164 million. Even if we go out four years, it's still 160 million. And as Jason said, since we don't really plan beyond five years, what happens out there is in the, in the ether. I really would like to have the opportunity to talk at some point about what the appropriate amount of debt should be for the city to carry. And just speaking personally as an old guy, the debt we're going to be issuing pursuant to all of this is still going to be outstanding in part after I'm dead. And that makes me a little uncomfortable, too. I don't want to burden other councils. I don't want to burden other generations. We see that the the debt is stable and continuing. I'd like to discuss whether that should continue. Thank you, Your Honor.
I agree with you. We do need to have that discussion.
And if I can just add, Your Honor, I think Greg and I had a long conversation about this, and obviously, it's a great policy and philosophical decision for the council. We've done an outstanding job over the last probably 20 years of trying to make sure that we really got our roads, sewers, storm sewers up to a level of of competence that we have great confidence that we can get ready for a conversation about how do you responsibly then manage the debt perhaps and work its way down? Because, you know, we didn't, we weren't in a position with street repair and sewer repair that we could relax. We now, I think, are in a great position to have this conversation, and it's a great conversation to have about how can we accelerate the debt retirement at the same time doing all the things we want to do to make the city continue to thrive? We put ourselves in what I would say is a great place to do that. And I think we've been hearing that for the last couple of years from the council to say, where are we now to try to get an acceleration of the debt margin? How do we get as many projects as we can get in and yet to try to take that number and reduce it? I think that's just responsible. And to have that conversation, I think everybody welcomes that conversation to see if there's a way to do that. And I think as we are talking to Baker Tilly, we want to understand, you know, do we, can we issue shorter-term notes? Can we drive our, our debt down in the short term at the same time still doing the projects that the council wants us to do and finding the appropriate level that that's at? And so the Middle Road project, as you know, we, we've talked about that coming in as a necessity, and and that'll help drive part of this. But I think we welcome that opportunity to have that conversation because all of us want that number to go down and go down quicker than and sooner than than later. So I think we welcome that conversation and think it's just the right thing to do at the right time.
Great. Well, let's schedule it as part of budget, and we'll be listening to staff and your good words on what you think can happen. There's lots of levers that can be pulled. So let's, as Jason likes to talk about the levers, the tax levers, there's budget levers that relate to, that relate to debt reduction. Awesome. Thank you. Anything else on this topic? All right, we'll move to the consent agenda item. This is our finance summary report as of 30 November, 2024. For that, we welcome our finance director, Jason Shat. You need not move, Jason. You're in the right spot.
Perfect.
Consent J. Thank you, sir.
I think we just wanted to put this on for discussion tonight because these are relatively new, these monthly reports that finance staff has been able to put together as a direct result of the new financial system. So we're really excited to be able to share these with you monthly. They will be delayed probably 45 to 60 days because there are always several expenditures that come in that might apply to November, and we may not have gotten a bill till, you know, end of December or January in some cases. So you'll have to give us a little bit of leeway in the timing. So I think the plan going forward is, once available, we will include these in a council packet, much like we do the bills today, just as informational for council. They're also available on the website, on the, in the finance department section of the city's website. But just as an introduction, I'll kind of talk through each section and happy to take any questions. Again, this is a financial summary for the month ended November 30th, 2024, for fiscal year 2425, which began July 1. So you'll see the first table there is revenue by source. I show this month, this month being November, the same month the prior year. We have a fiscal year to date, so in this case, this is July through November. And then a budget column as well as the percent of budget. So kind of give you an idea of how revenue is tracking against the budget, how it's tracking against where it was the same month the prior year, things of that nature. As of November, we're about 42% of the way through the calendar of the fiscal year. So you'd like to be a little bit ahead of 42% in most categories. Property taxes at 52%. That's not a surprise. It comes in twice a year. Other city taxes at 49%. That's great. Largely, that's going to be sales tax, hotel motel tax, running just a little ahead of where we would expect for, for them as far as budget goes. Licenses and permits are way ahead at 68% and on down the line. You'll see intergovernmental is maybe a little lagging. That would be, so this is across all funds. Most of intergovernmental is probably in the CIP fund and reimbursements for projects. So not surprising that that's at that level right now, and I'm sure those reimbursements are on the way. Pie chart, just revenue by source for the month, kind of give you a breakdown of where the city's revenue comes from. No surprise, sales or property tax is the largest piece of the pie for November. Same information, just versus fiscal year versus budget. So you can kind of see on the blue line how we are doing it in actuality against the budget on the orange line. Again, the charts or the graphs are just the data from the table in visual form. Onto the second page, we have expenditures by function. These are the state functions that we budget and report our financials by. Again, about 42% of the year has gone by as of November 30th, and our expenditures are pretty well reflective of that in total. We're at about 35% of budget, so running a little bit under budget in total. But you can see across those functions how, how we're faring. The only one that's a little bit out of whack is community and economic development at 47%, and that is just because we made TIF payments in November. Again, like property taxes, we pay those TIF rebates twice a year. So that's the bulk of the, of the budget there is, is those rebates. So being at 47% with the first half of those paid is not a surprise at all. You can see expenditures for November compared to last November. Expenditures by category, contractual services is the largest this month, and that's largely due to CIP projects. But on the operating side, obviously, salaries and wages will continue to be a big piece of the pie. On the third page, we have expenditures by department. So departments can sometimes cross those service areas from the previous table and and vice versa. But you can see, again, we have November, previous November, fiscal year to date, and then the budget, the percent of the budget spent and the percent of the budget remaining. Again, we're at about 35% in total on expenditures. There was one I wanted to point out. Which one was it? Maybe that was on the previous table. I know what I wanted to point out. If you look at expenditures this month in both tables versus the same month last year, you'll go, why have we spent so much more this November than last November? It's really simple. I asked the same question. We had three payrolls this November and only two last November. About twice a year, we have three payrolls in a month. It happened to hit November this year, which payroll being one of our larger expenditure categories that kind of pushed, pushed, pushed this November well beyond last November. But obviously, in total, by budget, we're doing just fine. You can see percent of budget spent year to date by department. And then I've also included, at the request of council member Jager, the, just the mayor and council's general fund budget. This is the one that has the payment to agencies line in it that we typically talk about during budget, all of council's payments to the various organizations and, and things around the Quad Cities as we, things that the city contributes to. So that's part of this budget. You can watch that on the middle of the table right here. That's at 64% of budget, not a surprise. A lot of those dues come due in the first half of the fiscal year. So I'm not, I'm not too alarmed by that at all. And that is it. I don't know that we will do a, maybe necessarily a presentation on these every month. Happy to answer any questions, obviously. But as we've introduced them, just kind of wanted to get in front of you and, and talk through it. And I would also say that this is a new report for us. If it's, if it's lacking something you'd like to see, please let us know. I'm sure we can make it happen.
Jason, there's two items that get reflected in the mayor and council's budget that typically they wouldn't see, insurance. Talk about those two.
I've left, I've actually left those out of that table. I'll go back to it. But oddly enough, the city's insurance for both health insurance for employees and risk management, so our liability insurance, is considered in the state chart of accounts a expenditure of the mayor and council. So it hits the mayor and council's budget. So sometimes when we look at, let me go up here, the mayor and council department budget, you'll see you have a budget of $9.2 million. Well, obviously, a huge portion of that is, is those two insurance programs. So that's why I included just the general fund department that you're used to seeing, the, really the expenditures that you, you control within your own department, separate from those, those others that are also attributed to the mayor and council department.
Questions for Jason? Greg?
Your Honor, I just wanted to say, I don't think it's the council's responsibility to direct budgets or oversee the operation of the, of the city. But I do think the council needs to be generally aware of how expenditures are relative to the various functions of government. To me, these documents sum that up perfectly. I'm very grateful that Jason is doing that, and I'm appreciative. So say thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Nick?
I would second what council member Jager said. This is, I really like this, the fact that we can put the new system to work. That's also a benefit, too. But yeah, this is, this is incredibly helpful.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody else?
I have one que, one question, Your Honor.
Yes, Greg?
How close are we being done with the, not it's a bad program, but the alley program? I, I thought that was getting done here pretty quick.
Brett?
Yes, we have two years remaining, Greg. So we have 2025 construction season and 2026, and that's reflected in the CIP. You can see the, the line item's still there, but it zeros out in year three.
Okay, so that's just maintenance after that?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Brian or Brent, how many alleys, when we started that alley program, were we supposed to get done, and how long did that take? Because this is pretty incredible.
Yeah, so when I first started here, we looked at the alley program, and there's 103 alleys in total, and there was 68 that were actually resurfaced or sealed code alleys. There was a time when, like the first two or three years, we were actually, during the spring, having residents bring their garbage up to the front of their homes because our garbage trucks couldn't even drive down them with the freezing, or the, you know, the heaving of the pavement as the, as the weather started changing. So we actually ended up creating a program. We presented it to council. We integrated the funding mechanism and a new profile. And in total, like I said, 68 alleys, and I believe, Brent, we only have like, what, maybe nine or 10 left?
Yeah, we were, and the second part of Decker's question, we were doing every alley being rebuilt in concrete previously. And just depending on the size of the alley, we were doing two at the most in a single year. A lot of years, it was just one, if it was a double section. So we would have been looking at roughly 30 years to finish everything in concrete, and we will have done them all in 10 or 11 years. So it's really been a successful program.
For Nick's benefit, the, the depth, the materials that we're using now versus what we used?
Yeah, so we were using a six-inch concrete on Yeah, so we were using a six-inch concrete on six-inch base. This new profile is twelve inches of crushed concrete and then five inches of asphalt. The reason why we use twelve inches of the profile is that it's so narrow, you don't want to typically drive a truck over the base. But with a twelve-inch base, they're able to back the machine right up on it and then pave it all the way out and be done in a very short period of time. Compared to removing and replacing it, you know, in concrete, they wouldn't be able to drive on that base. They would have to sit there and start on one end and whatnot and work their way and phase it a heck of a lot differently than we do it now.
Yeah, that's a great program, for sure.
All right, anything else? I'd like to entertain a motion that consent J remain on the consent agenda for tonight's consideration.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll unanimously take up consent J as part of consent later this evening. I have no items to be added to tonight's agenda. Anybody from council have an item to be added?
Yeah, Mark on the items to appear.
Yes, Mark, do you want to do a presentation now?
Real quick, yeah.
Yep, sounds great. So Mark's going to give you a presentation on items to appear. At number ten, for the public hearing and eleven for the ordinance. Thank you, I thought I was right, but I was reading twelve to make sure.
Thanks, your honor. As you mentioned, this is an item to appear, but we want to give you a quick presentation ahead of the public hearing on the agenda. So going to bring you case twenty-four zero seven-two, four thirty-eight Sixteenth Street. So here downtown, a rezoning R two to C two. And we'll give you some maps, a little orange here real quick. Four thirty-eight Sixteenth Street, formerly a post office, and after that, it was a school, the Edison's Academy, which has now relocated up near the Bettendorf High School. This building has been purchased by fifteen twenty-five Brown Street LLC, owned and operated by Gary Quinby. Needs to rezone it to have an office use. The R two use that was there before allowed the post office and allowed the school use. But actually, even though it's a less intense use to go to general office from those two previous uses, we have to upzone it. So sometimes our zoning is a little bit confusing in that regard. But from a use standpoint, probably a less intense use, but the zoning does require that C two. I'll point out, this is going to be in keeping with our comprehensive plan, our downtown master plan. We have a future land use of mixed transitional. It does allow the C two zoning to flow from that. You'll see that on the zoning map here, that C two is already surrounding this area. In the future of this area, long term, is probably more commercial, mixed use, commercial, residential, downtown type of arrangement. So really, that rezoning is already occurring around it, if you will, and has already occurred on that block face some years ago. And just one block away, you have C two as well. You may be familiar with the building. You have these overhangs on each side, so there's parking over here, we'll get to that in a second. But plenty of parking. Remember, we can cut the parking in half in the downtown if we need to. But you're overparked as is, we're going to keep four-foot sidewalks in place. The building can stay intact, so no footprint change, no construction of any kind. Really just converting it to the office use. And our lot size and our setbacks are all met, so it's conforming lot. Marked in white are your parking spaces. These are the ones that are hard to see when you drive by, but there are an overhang with parking here and then to the south and some more parallel parking. You have a positive staff report in your packet. The Planning and Zoning Commission did make a recommendation for approval as well on December eighteenth. And the only thing is that they do add parking, which they may do in the future, that we have the dry dustless surface, which is already a code requirement. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Questions for Mark, Jerry?
Thank you, your honor. I've got several questions. One is, will this fall within the overlay district?
It is.
It is. And then the second, next question is, will it be within the Schmidt district?
I don't know, I think so. I don't know if it's also in the Schmidt or not, but I think so.
And then my other question is more of a comment. This is not a conditional rezoning, right? So this is C two, so in the future, even next year, if the owner decides to demolish the building and build something else there, he can build it within the C two, anything within the C two classification without rezoning, correct?
Not exactly. The lot still has its own constraints. So the size of the lot is going to constrain a lot of what can go there. And so it's a pretty small lot.
Yeah.
Big from a residential standpoint, but from a commercial standpoint, pretty small lot. So that's going to, that's going to change a lot what could go there. And if he did want to change his use, it would come back as a site plan, and we'd have a chance to comment on it at that point.
Right. But it wouldn't require rezoning, and we could change, the owner could change the use.
That's true.
If he jumped through these other hoops. Thank you.
Anything else? Lisa or Greg Adamson?
No, sir.
All right.
I have an interesting story to share. I don't know if you've watched the weather down here, but like the upper panhandle has gotten like, Louisiana's getting like ten inches of snow right now. And the upper part of Florida is getting snow and ice. And they only have for the state ten snowplows. So I was just watching that, and all I could think of was Brian.
Well, we're not going to send any of ours down there just quite yet. Hundred thousand dollars an hour, we might go. Couple different memorandums that were provided you tonight. The first is a minor change to the resolution associated with consent item E. I've asked Mr. Curran and Taylor, Basswick, if he'd like to comment. Just tell us a little bit about what this is. We see the memo, I think I understand it. But if you'd like to give us a couple of minutes, because we have time before our next meeting, that'd be helpful, thank you.
I can start and Taylor can jump in. Thank you, your honor. To refresh your memory, this is the annexation north of Forest Grove Drive and west of Wells Ferry. This was previously approved by council. After approval, it was, there was a bridge project on that bridge right near the point where Wells Ferry goes underneath I eighty. And because it's on the county and the city kind of are contiguous there, the county already had the project underway. So we wanted to wait upon discussing this with this city development board, wait until the county's project was completed to complete this annexation. While the bridge was getting completed, some of the properties changed hands, including PV School District completed, they closed on the property that was already contemplated to come into with, to their ownership. Some other changes in ownership took place. So the, this resolution is really accepting the amended applications for annexation and affirming the approval that was previously given by council. The, there was one additional change that actually came in just, I think, earlier today or maybe over the weekend, but subsequent to publication of the council packet. We, it was brought to our attention by the auditor that the Forest Grove School Preservation, it's a nonprofit entity, that they had actually purchased the property from the, what was previously, I think, stated as Forest Grove Properties LLC two point O or something to that effect. It's really the same ownership team, the same people are involved. But they actually did transfer that property. So we just wanted to be clear in the recital as to who the owners are of the property in the annexation area to confirm. This is a one-hundred percent voluntary annexation. All of the owners of the property in the annexation area have requested this annexation to go forward. And, but because it is within two miles of Leclerc, it's got to go to the city development board. Taylor has been talking to the board. They're on board with our process here of not needing another public hearing. The approval has already taken place. The area is the same, but we just wanted to be really clear on who owns the property. So that's, I guess, a summary. And Taylor, if you've got anything to add?
Nope, Councilman Curran spoke on all facts on the case. This will be, pending your approval, be forwarded to the city development board as soon as we can get it on their agenda. And as mentioned, it's a one-hundred percent voluntary annexation. And all of those public hearings notices were conducted as part of that original resolution passed by council last year.
Any questions for anybody? Okay, the other memorandum you got was about a purchase of an outreach vehicle for the library. If you have any questions, you can ask them at this time, or you can ask them in the break, or you can ask them as we attack the consent agenda later. Yes, Mr. Jager?
As it relates to the information provided, I'm very thankful and grateful that Jillian provided it, so thank you.
There you go. Yes, Jerry?
Thank you. Do we have a reasonable delivery time expected?
Typically, once the vehicle is, we've put the down payment on the vehicle, it's about a twelve to sixteen-month timeline from the conversion process as long as we continue to meet our goals for fundraising. Yeah, we're just securing the vehicle right now.
Other questions for Jillian? All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We stand adjourned, good work, people, we will see you in nineteen minutes. You can tear off that top page. We did some good work. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the City of Bettendorf City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at seven o'clock PM. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Jager?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Nauman?
Here.
Sexer?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
Bezinski?
Here.
Thank you all for being here. Now, if you could all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Please remain standing for the invocation that follows the pledge. That will be given by Bettendorf Police Chaplain and Minister of Wildwood Church, Mr. Ben Levica.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in thy name.
Pastor Ben, thanks for being here.
Good evening. All right, would you join me in a word of prayer, please? Our heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with grateful hearts, the opportunity to serve this great community. Father, we ask for you to be with our leaders, our public servants, and citizens who have gathered here, united by a shared commitment to justice and peace and the well-being of all. Lord, grant the leaders present wisdom, integrity, and clarity as they deliberate and make many decisions that will shape the future of our city. May their choices reflect compassion, fairness, and a desire to uplift the most vulnerable among us. We lift up our law enforcement officers tonight, first responders, and all who dedicate their lives to protecting and serving our community. Strengthen them with courage, guide them with discernment, and protect them as they carry out their duties. Bless our city with unity, understanding, and a shared purpose. Help us to set aside differences and work together for the common good. May this meeting and all that follows be guided by your hand and reflect your love and justice, in your holy name we pray.
Amen. Thank you, Ben, great to see you. All right, we have a special evening this evening. We have a proclamation for National Mentoring Month, the month of January twenty twenty-five. And we have a couple of very special people here with us this evening. This proclamation is requested by Big Brothers Big Sisters of the Mississippi Valley, and will be received by Big Sister Jessica and Little Sister Kennedy. All right. I'll come meet you right about there, and we'll do a proclamation. What do you think? Pretty cool? How old are the Kennedy?
Eight.
Eight years old, okay. So a proclamation is a special thing that comes from a mayor of a city or a governor of a state. And it's a discussion with some kind of funny words. But we'll go through it, and then we're going to give you a confirmation. Okay? All right, so I do have a proclamation from the office of the mayor of the City of Bettendorf. Whereas everybody remembers someone special, a neighbor, a teacher, relative, or friend, who broadened our horizons and brought purpose to our lives. And whereas these special individuals singled us out and volunteered their time to help us become engaged and stay on the right track to success. And whereas research has shown that children engaged in healthy and safe one-to-one mentoring relationships are more likely to graduate high school, avoid incarceration and delinquent behavior, and are more likely to volunteer regularly in their community. You going to come volunteer with us?
Yes.
That's a little bit, we'll get you there. All right.
When I finish college.
When you finish college, you should go to college. Good idea. And whereas there are a significant number of vulnerable children in our community who need and want a positive role model in their lives, and our city embraces the concept of engaging volunteers to become mentors. And whereas mentoring programs like Big Brothers Big Sisters of the Mississippi Valley make our state and community stronger by enabling impactful relationships that provide valuable support networks. Now, therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the Brother City of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of January twenty twenty-five as National Mentoring Month in our community. And I encourage all of our citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, and religious and educational institutions to support mentoring and give young people in our community the gift of time and friendship through Big Brothers Big, got it? Come with me, Big Brothers Big Sisters of the Mississippi Valley. All right. Well, welcome. What do you think? You want to go second? Anything to say? You can think about it, go right ahead. Welcome, we're glad you're here.
Thank you for inviting me.
What else about your big sister?
This one or my actual big sister?
This one right here. You've got to bring her down here.
She's nice, kind. She brings me, she gets me food with her own money. I'm thankful for it. And after this, we're going to get ice cream.
You're winning, you're doing great.
It's up to her if she wants to get me McDonald's.
There you have it.
Because every Wednesday, I get McDonald's. But sometimes if I have other Big Brothers Big Sisters, then I don't get McDonald's. I can choose.
Very nice.
For lunch or dinner.
We really enjoyed, we eat lunch together once a week at school. And Big Brothers Big Sisters has so many wonderful events that we are able to attend. And we have really enjoyed all of those, especially the R K. At T B K.
Very nice. Well, let's give a round of applause. What do you think? That's pretty cool?
Yeah.
All right, back up a little, can everyone smile? Thank you, ladies. Very nice to meet you both. Okay, we are at the spot on the agenda for public requests of council. If there's anybody here who wishes to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing, we'd like to hear from you. Please approach the podium in the back, state your name and address. We want to hear your public requests of council. I think I know why all three of you are here, so we'll close the public requests of council. Let's move to our first public hearing. This is with regard to the issuance of some general obligation bonds. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, your honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to this?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to the issuance of our general obligation bonds for the CIP. We just discussed at our committee of the hall this evening. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? All right, we'll close that public hearing and move to a resolution. Councilmember Baden, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action on the issuance not to exceed $11,500,000 general obligation bonds of the City of Bettendorf, State of Iowa for essential corporate purposes. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Pazinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Okay, we have unanimously passed the issuance of those general obligation bonds. Following our public hearing, let's move to the next public hearing. This is with regard to the 2025 sanitary sewer rehabilitation projects. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, your honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regards to this?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to our 2025 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project or projects. Those are in your list of projects. Anybody here wish to be heard on this item? We'll close the public hearing and move to a resolution. Councilmember Jager, please.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution approving plan spec and form of contract for 2025 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Pazinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
All right, that resolution unanimously passed. We move on to another public hearing. This is with regard to amending the zone map for 438 16th Street from R2 to C2. This is something we discussed this evening at our committee of the whole. Any questions on this before we go to the public hearing? Okay, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, your honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written notifications?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing on this change to a piece of property in Bettendorf. Anybody here wish to be heard on the item? We'll close the public hearing and move to the ordinance. Councilmember Sexer, please.
Thank you, your honor. I have the first reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa zone map for 438 16th Street, lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 4, Town of Bettendorf, from R2 Single Family Residence District to C2 Community Commercial District. I move approval ordinance at its first reading.
Second.
Any discussion here after our presentation tonight? Hearing none. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Pazinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
Nauman, I mean, Brown, sorry.
All right, that unanimously passes first reading. There'll be two more. We move to another ordinance, this one without a public hearing. Councilmember Nauman, help me, please.
Thank you, your honor. I do have the first reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf City Code Section 6-1-285 speed restrictions by adding a school zone on Maple Crest Drive. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Michelle, please, call the roll.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Pazinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
Brown?
Wait, what's my name? Oh, I.
All right. That also unanimously passes first reading. There'll be two more. Let's talk about a second reading, Councilmember Pelczynski.
Thank you, your honor. I have the second reading of the ordinance providing that tax increment revenues levied and collected each year on property located within the I-80 urban renewal area in the City of Bettendorf, County of Scott, State of Iowa,